Good evening, everybody, and welcome back as we had a break over the summer from from council. And so, welcome to tonight's council meeting for August 12. If everybody could please silence all their devices, and I will start the meeting with our land acknowledgement. As we gather here today, let us be reminded that the community in which we live, work, and play is situated on traditional unceded Algonquin First Nation territory. We would like to acknowledge and thank the Anishinaabe people and express our respect and support for their rich history and culture. Could I get a call to order, please?
All members of council are present.
Thank you. Item number three is the approval of the agenda, and the recommended motion is that the agenda be approved as presented. Could I get a mover, please? Move by Deputy Tennant and Counselor Kavanaugh seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, and that is carried. Disclosure of pecuniary interest and/or conflict of interest of general nature thereof can be made now at any point throughout the meeting by notifying the clerk. Item number five is the approval of the minutes. Could I get the recommended motion, please?
That the council minutes dated June 24, 2025 be accepted as presented.
Move by Counselor Atkinson, second by Counselor Calmly. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, and that's carried. We have one item today on the docket as being the first meeting back, and we finished everything prior to the summer break. Item number one is bylaw to amend the traffic and parking bylaw. Recommended motion, please.
That bylaw 58-2025 to amend traffic and parking bylaw 46-2003 stop sign at Doucette Drive and Dunham Street be read a first, second, and third time and finally passed.
Move by Counselor Hinton and seconded by Counselor Sacospina. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, and that's carried. And so that finishes our business, moves us along to announcements of which I have no official announcements, but I know Counselor Kavanaugh will definitely have a few if not both her and Counselor Sacospina, so.
I just have one. We have the first annual C Carlton Place Porch Fest coming up on Saturday 13th, and the registration is still open for performers and hosts. Now, if you go to carltonplaceporchfest.ca, you can already see the people that have signed up for this musical extravaganza, which I've been waiting for for a long time. So Saturday 13, Carlton Place Porch Fest.ca.
Thank you, Counselor Sacospina and Counselor Kavanaugh.
Thank you. So just a few things as we're getting into August, and there's lots of fun family things happening. I encourage everyone to visit downtown Carlton Place and the Dog Days of Summer, which has a number of smaller activities going on throughout the month of August, including fun bingo where you look for the dogs of Carlton Place through the downtown core. Also, this Thursday, August 14th at 6:00 PM, we have a park party at Farrow Park. August 16th, which is Saturday, there is the Carlton Place Riverfront Artscape at the CP Gallery from 10:30 to 5:00. We're doing a movie in the park at Carlton Junction at 8:00 PM. There's actually music starting there at 7:00 before the movie. August 21st, there's Jammin' at the Junction with Brendan and Jamie McMunn at 6:30 at Carlton Junction. And August 22nd at 6:30 PM, Dog Days of Summer Bad to the Bone Tour, which is hosted by the Carlton Place and Beckwith Heritage Museum. And then finally, August 24th, there's a Young Entrepreneurs Market at 11:00 AM at Dark and Deadly Cafe. So stay tuned and go out and enjoy the rest of this beautiful summer.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Thank you, councillors, for updating us on everything that's going on in town. I will just quickly mention that this is the time of year when the Carlton Place Canoe Club is in full force. We just had three members of the canoe club travel overseas to compete in the World Juniors. All three members, Isabel Lowry, Dylan Redwood Wheeler, and Evie McDonald, all did extremely, extremely well. They all placed in their A finals across the board, and Isabel Lowry is a three-time gold medal champion, world champion. So congratulations to all of them. And the season continues. There's Senior Worlds with Evie McDonald's going on. There's Ontario Championships coming up. There is a Canadian Championships coming up, and we have representation across the board from our local canoe club. So congratulations to everybody and much success. And speaking to somebody today, if you have somebody that you think is deserving, whether it's a youth or a citizen that needs to call out by us, we want to highlight everybody. So please bring them forward, and we're glad to give them a bit of praise. So that's it for me for announcements. And so we will move along to our confirmatory bylaw. The recommended motion, please.
That bylaw 59-2025 confirmation of council proceedings for August 12th be read a first, second, and third time and finally passed.
Thank you. Move by Counselor Calmly, seconded by Counselor Kavanaugh. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed and carried. Moves us along to adjournment, and the recommended motion is this meeting be adjourned at 6:06 PM. Move by Counselor Hinton, seconded by Deputy Mayor Tennant. All in favor? We're adjourned, and we move on to committee of the whole, of which we have a bunch of items on the docket. And we have a new committee of the whole chair, Counselor Hinton. All the best.
Thank you, Mayor Randall. Well, welcome to the Committee of the Whole meeting for August the 12th. I will now call the Committee of the Whole meeting to order at 6:06. Approval of agenda. The suggested motion is that the agenda be accepted as presented. Move by. Counselor Calmly, seconded by Counselor Kavanaugh. Any discussions? See none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried. Declaration, I couldn't even get the declaration. Declaration of pecuniary conflict of interest and general nature thereof. If so, please state the item, the nature of the nature of the interest for the record. Counselor Sacospina?
Yes, I have an issue with 5C strategic properties. My family owns a property on Lansdowne. I will be refraining from that event.
Thank you. Members are also reminded that the declaration can be made now or anytime during the considered on the agenda. Minutes to be approved and received. The suggested motion is that the committee of the whole minutes dated June 24, 2025 be accepted as presented. Move by Deputy Mayor Tennant, seconded by Counselor Atkinson. Any discussion? See none? All in favor? Any opposed? And the motion is carried. And we are on to reports. We have eight reports this evening. First, we have a new blasting bylaw, Communication 136072. Report by Guy, Director of Public Works. I'll get the motion on the floor first, Guy, if that's okay. The suggested motion is the council repeal and replace blasting bylaw 75-2004 as outlined in the Director of Public Works report dated August 12, 2025, and the council amend bylaw 46-2025, the administrative monetary penalty system bylaw to include a new table in Schedule A designated provisions of the blasting regulation bylaw and the corresponding administrative penalty amounts. Move by. Mayor Randall, seconded by Counselor Sacospina. Guy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So as you mentioned, we are here to repeal a 21-year-old bylaw that's outdated and bring forward a new one in examining what other municipalities have done since that time and what the Ontario provincial government has done. They've developed a standard specification, Municipal 120, which deals, which provides a comprehensive list of requirements for blasting that all of the contractors are very familiar with. We've been asked before why we're not using that, and it was just a question of, well, we have to update our bylaw before we can do that. So that's what I'm here to do tonight. As well, it does list the bylaw that we provided to you, the draft, does list a number of offenses and set fines when you are not compliant with these requirements. And we will also be using the administrative monetary penalties bylaw, which you approved earlier this year. We will amend that one to add these fines to that list. So with that, I'll take any questions that you might have with regard to the bylaw.
Thanks, Guy. Counselor Sacospina?
Hi, Guy. First of all, I think all of us would like to thank you about what you've gone through the past few weeks with the water, that you've answered all our questions and all the many people who have asked questions, and I think we have enough now so we can answer them ourselves. My question is, how does it take 21 years to change a bylaw when I know that they changed explosives in the last 21 years?
Through the chair, unfortunately, some of our bylaws don't get revisited that often. This was just one that fell by the wayside. And when it became apparent that it needed to be updated, we got around to it as quickly as possible. Diane rode to my attention, and we got to it right away.
Deputy Mayor Tennant?
Thank you. Altogether, I like what I see. My question is about enforcement. Are we going to have to get our bylaw team some training for this? There are some fairly technical aspects of blasting, and they are the enforcement body under this. Are they going to need to learn a few things about blasting?
Through the chair, obviously, they will be able to communicate with Public Works to determine when there's an offense that has occurred. Most of the submissions will be coming through me as I am the representative that issues blasting permits and controls the blasting permits. So whenever there is a transgression, I will be in communication with them and let them know that it's time to issue an offense, and they will be relying on my expertise.
Mayor Randall?
Thank you very much. So Guy, there's a short list of offenses that companies or individuals, whoever is blasting, may break. Are these issues currently with all the development that we have on the go? Like, would we see some of these instances currently, or is this just a truly, we're updating this to today's standards? Second part of that question would be, since the majority of the blasting that's taking place is being done in subdivisions and by very large corporations, would a monetary penalty of $300 or $500 really mean much to them if they really wanted to do something? And so my question would be, is this just a standard number from other municipalities? And I'll let you answer.
Through the chair, thank you for the question. As far as the amounts of the monetary penalties are fairly standard across the board, across municipalities. They have to be reasonable. We can't go up and find them a ridiculous amount. It just won't be held up by our governing authorities. Going back to your first question, which is slipping my mind now, could you just refresh?
Just whether we see any of these instances on a regular basis, or have we seen any of these recently?
Thank you. No, we have not. We've been fortunate that we have been dealing with more or less two blasting companies that have been working for the developers, and they have been quite forthcoming in following the regulations and providing the necessary documentation and records and vibration monitoring and so on and so forth. So but not to say that there won't be other contractors coming in. So these are the most common offenses that are in the bylaws of various municipalities for things that might get missed and the fines, set fines to go along with them.
Thank you very much.
Any other discussions on this? See none? All in favor? Any opposed? And motion is passed. Our next report is DP 302205, 320 Coleman Street, and Tyler Duval, senior planner, will be giving us a report on that. Tyler, I'll just put the motion on the floor first, if that's okay? That the committee of the whole approve application DP 302205 for the property known as 320 Coleman Street legally described as Block 108 on Plan 27M4 in the town of Carlton Place, and that the committee direct staff to issue development permit in accordance with Section 2.24 of the Development Permit Bylaw 15-2015, subject to the following conditions. One, that the development permit agreement include a requirement that satisfies the town's cash-in lieu of parking policy. Move by. Counselor Kavanaugh, seconded by Counselor Sacospina. And the floor is yours, Tyler.
Thank you. Good evening, members of council. Counselor Hinton, you're doing a great job. This, as you mentioned, this is a class three development permit at 320 Coleman, which is the property at McNeilian Coleman, where the Giant Tiger and the Esso is currently located. The applicant here is seeking to construct a one-story commercial building approximately 738 square meters in the southeast corner of that site. This is a special note here, is this is an exact same application that was approved in 2023. However, there was no agreement signed for that. The approval was was done and the agreement was drafted, but there was never an executed agreement. So that approval has lapsed, and the applicants are resubmitting the exact same package. It's been evaluated under the same development permit as the current DP is under appeal. So we received the package again, the application fees again, circulated it anew, and there were no new technical or public comments that were generated through that review period. So we've, you know, we're here again for a decision from the committee. I'm happy to answer any questions related to the file.
Thank you, Tyler. We'll open it up for discussions. Counselor Sacospina?
Hi, Tyler. Now, I'm just going to ask you a question what people are going to ask me. This had lapsed, correct? Now, does that mean because they didn't have or the people to go in there, they just, you don't know, they don't tell you. So how many times can they lapse these things before? That's it. They can do it as many times. Okay, that's all I want to know. Okay.
Counselor Calmly?
Thank you. Last time when we talked about this file, we had discussed some added pedestrian safety measures with some added paint and some stop sign. Is that included in this current application?
Through the chair, yeah, that's a good specification to make. So it was not the same submission. It was the final package that we had approved that was been resubmitted. So you're right, we did make some additions there with the line painting. And yeah, so everything that was finally approved and included in the draft agreement, that is what was resubmitted. So that is correct, yes.
Any other discussion on this? Mayor Randall?
Thank you. Thank you, Tyler. The site is the entire site, where that includes the existing building that's already on the site. If I'm looking at this, it's all included. So the parking for that is for the entire site, including what's already there for Giant Tiger and the mall that's there, correct?
Through the chair, yes, that's correct. And the parking study that was submitted with that evaluated. So there is a, one of the variances to the application was a reduction, I think. I believe it was 19 spaces. And that's why the conditional, Sean gets the feedback, the conditional approval was to make sure that the cash-in lieu provisions are are collected as part of this application.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that it wasn't just parking for the new building, because some people might see that and go, oh, we've got plenty of parking. That's for the entire site. This isn't part of the approval tonight, but something that we may want to look at down the road because of where the traffic will probably be coming in and out of this for the new portion. McGregor Street may become much busier. We get concerns from citizens currently about parking on McGregor already without that additional traffic. It may be something where we need to look at whether we just don't have parking on McGregor at all, or have, maybe, I know that sometimes Lepine has parking for visitors. They have ample parking for their own residents. Sometimes they use it as a loading area for people going in and out of Lepine. So maybe we designate maybe like a strict kind of loading area, but no parking there in the future, just something to look at. But I have no issues with the approval of this item. Thank you.
Any other discussions on this item? See none? All in favor? Any opposed? And that motion is carried. And we are moving on to third item, proposal to add new strategic properties, Communication 136070, presented by Nikki Dwyer, Director of Development Services. I'll put the motion on the floor. The council directs staff to prepare an application for an official plan amendment and development permit by law amendment, respecting the inclusions of new strategic properties as identified in the report by the Director of Development Services dated June 24, 2025. Move by. Counselor Atkinson, seconded by Counselor Calmly. And the floor is yours, Nikki.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is a representation of a staff report that was presented and tabled in June, right before summer recess. This is the next step in a very multi-step process to identifying and moving forward with policy changes to strategic properties. Council's aware we currently have five strategic properties in town, two of which have been subject to development approvals already. There are three that are subject to an amendment as part of this work. But in moving forward with our policy amendment, we also took the opportunity to engage early in public consultation with the community about whether or not there were other sites that warranted a status of strategic property. From the public consultation, we received lots of suggestions, of which seven were selected by staff and supported by council to move forward to individual property owner consultation. Following those initial discussions, we're recommending five additional sites be added. These include 153 205 Edwards Drive, however, only the Joseph Street frontage on that property, 215 Lake Avenue West, which is the high school, 2 Lansdowne Avenue, which is the Cheerful Giver property, and 25 to 55 Lansdowne Avenue, which is known locally as the CP Muse. And, excuse me, one more site, 82 to 84 Mel Street, which is where the food bank is currently located. The other two sites that we don't believe we can support in the amendment at this time are 163 Townline Road, which is the Circle Cay, and 151 Townline Road, which is the former Beer Store property, and the rationale for that is provided within the report. So just to clarify what our next steps are, because what we're proposing to do is an amendment to our official plan and concurrently an amendment to our development permit bylaw, we're required through the Planning Act to go through the rigorous public consultation process that comes with that. So with council's direction pertaining to these five sites, we'll start preparing the public consultation material and begin hosting open houses and public meetings so that the public has the opportunity to provide some comment in addition to the comments we've already received from the individual property owners. If at any time council decides that one or more of these properties should not be included as a strategic property, you are welcome to give direction to remove or add new ones in. I'd caution you that adding new ones in may slow the process down because we're going to want to take time to evaluate what the impact is on each individual property. But at this point, the staff recommendation is to at least include these five in the next stage with an opportunity for council to finalize what the performance standards are, what permitted uses look like, as well as the final to be decided list of sites to be included. So with that, Mr. Chair, if there are any questions, I'm happy to address them.
Thanks, Nikki. And over the floor for any discussions on this? Counselor Calmly?
Yeah, I have two of these properties, the Cheerful Giver and the CP Muse, are both located in the transitional downtown section of our of our documents. What makes putting them a strategic property different than what they can already do within the transitional section, which has higher density, which has mixed use? What's the benefit of putting them in strategic properties over letting them do a traditional application?
Thank you. You're right. You tack on it to a good point, which was identified in the initial staff report from December. The transitional zoning, as far as uses and density go, are almost identical to strategic properties. They are both in both the eyes of the development permit bylaw and the official plan. They're both considered to be targeted growth areas, so they're there and designed to include higher density uses. What I would say the advantage to including them in strategic properties is, is that it provides the municipality more ability to dictate on a site-specific basis what the performance standards look like. So some of these sites have very unique frontages and geometries, and so we can tailor setbacks and frontage and how we're orienting the building on the site in a more refined way upfront, rather than leaving it to the blanket provisions that we use across all transitional properties. So I'd say that puts us in the driver's seat when it comes to working with the developer to file a future application. Certainly, there's a balancing act. We don't want to be too prescriptive, given that we don't know what's coming on the site, but we also don't want to take the approach that we've had with previous strategic properties where we have no provisions and the sky is the limits because we've found that has also not worked in anyone's favor. So we're trying to walk that fine line. But I do think that in this case, Cheerful Giver and the CP Muse are unique enough sites that I think it's beneficial to have the oversight on prescribing site-specific
Any further discussions? Mayor Randall?
Before I know I'm going to go off a bit, I'd just let everybody else get their thoughts in if they wish, but so to be clear, Nikki and I have had lengthy conversations about this item, and we disagree on much of it. So we'll get that out of the way right there respectfully, of course. Nikki, there's so this these, adding these came out of an interim control that we have. We're in the middle of doing an interim control on strategic properties of our existing ones to do just what you just stated, which is to make sure that we have clear and defined setbacks and densities and all that stuff in those, so that we are growing out in a manner that is beneficial to our community long term. Is that a fair statement to make? Perfect. And can I ask when that? Is this part of that discussion eventually?
Yes, it is. So what council hasn't seen is the tailoring of the performance standards on the existing strategic properties. We did a little bit of that in the new development permit bylaw rewrite for the sites where we knew what they've approved, they've had developed- in the new development permit by law rewrite for the sites where we knew what they've approved, they've had development approvals in place, we could just translate what has already been approved directly into the the tables. What we haven't presented to council yet is those other three sites, so the Wool Growers, one fifty Rosamund, and one fifteen Emily Street. Those performance standards, modified performance standards will come forward in the public consultation that'll take place in the fall.
Like Counselor Conley, I I questioned whether we already have the ability for these sites to do exactly what it is they're looking to do. And I question whether adding them into a strategic property, yes, we you're saying we control it up maybe a little bit better. I the the two sites I have the biggest issue with are the Cheerful Giver site and the Muse in that if if we're adding increased densities and traffic flow through those spaces, that we like they're awkward, awkward sites to add anything to. And and we don't have a way out of it. This is where you and I kind of went back and forth is we can't widen Franktown Road. We can't widen Lansdowne. We can't widen Lake Avenue. I mean, we could do that if we spent tens of millions of dollars, bought up property, torn down things and do that, but I don't foresee that council this I don't I wouldn't vote in favor of something of that nature. And so we have what we have, and we have to in the future, look at ways to move traffic through these corridors. And by potentially giving opportunities to increase densities and and add in what I see is and believe me, when we when we approved the Finley Foundry property a number of years ago, whenever that came, it was in what I think we all agreed to a benefit to the downtown core. We were adding people to the downtown core. We were taking a historic Brownfield site and 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 putting something that was going to be beneficial to to us. And so I'm in favor of of building out properly where traffic can flow properly. And if we end up adding residential in either of those areas and we're adding, you know, dozens, hundreds of cars depending upon what might come to us in the future. I just I have a lot of problems with how that's going to look, not only short term but long term, and that's another thing that we talked about, and I love those conversations. So we have the ability, do these individual properties as they stand right now, can they bring items forward to us to to do what they would do if they were under a strategic umbrella?
Thank you. Through the chair, I keep looking at Dana, I'm so used to you being chair, through the chair. Yeah, you've got a couple of points there. So one, I want to contextualize for council that, and it's the point that Counselor Conley made. These properties today exist as transitional properties, which means they are already permitted to have residential uses on them. If through the strategic properties process, you decide that residential uses are not appropriate, then you could actually remove that as a permitted use. If one of these sites, you decide you don't think that you have enough information in front of you right now to determine that residential is a good fit, you could simply change those uses to say you're limited to commercial uses on the site. Okay, which is going to give you more control than than you frankly have right now. And allowing us to do that on an individual basis with each of these property owners may help flesh out areas of conflict in what their future visions are. I can tell you at this point, all of the property owners that we've talked to have a general idea of what they'd like to do with the property, but they are not set in stone, and they are looking for direction from council and staff and the town about how that fits with the community's vision. So that's the first point. The second point that I wanted to make is that the inclusion of these specific properties came directly out of public consultation. Staff have vetted them, but certainly if at any time in this process, council doesn't believe that you have sufficient information to make a significant change to policy to put them in strategic properties, then you are absolutely in the right to direct staff to remove them from the list. If we remove them from the list, all of the property owners have been advised that that does not bar them from coming forward with their own individual applications that would be evaluated based on information submitted at that time. In including them as strategic properties, it does remove in some cases, an additional step. There are a couple of properties right now that are designated as low-density residential. And so certainly there is an advantage to being a strategic property, but that doesn't negate the fact that they're still going to have significant application processes before them before they get to building permit stage. They will all still have to come into council with class three development applications for evaluation to work out the refined details of what those sites look like. So this is this is big picture policy again. It is, we're trying to work with people to try and remove as many red tape barriers as possible, but leave appropriate processes in place to evaluate the applications further once we start to flesh out what they look like.
Thank you, Nikki. Counselor Conley, followed by Deputy Mayor Tennant.
Question, question on something you just said. The the province likes to take control of lots of our decisions and things. If we actually said a property, we don't want residential on it, and our DBP says we can through transitional sector, do we have a hope at all of saying no residential on that property as a strategic property if they go to the province? Like I feel like the province would work against us on that one. Taking away that added control.
Thank you. Yes, you raise an excellent point. The province and the federal government is big on pushing residential integration in any land use category. I think you would be hard pressed to deny a residential integration proposal. That's not to say it's not impossible. And we look at all sites individually to determine whether or not there is an appropriate fit there and if it can be justified. But I think the tests for appropriateness and justification right now are pretty rigorous, and unless there is a significant chance of public health and safety issues, the municipality would be very hard pressed to deny.
Deputy Mayor Tennant?
So last time we spoke about this, I asked to defer it. And part of the reason for that was that I think we're doing the cart before the horse on this one. I think we should be talking about you know, what what changes we might make to a property on this list or or on our current list before we start selecting the properties themselves. I don't have an idea outside of giving these properties more density why we'd even go down this road. Personally, what I'd like to do is go and assess the current strategic properties we have, do that exercise, and come back to this after, once we've had that discussion and once we have some better ideas about, you know, how we would like to define a strategic property and what we'd like them to be. So I wouldn't support at this time adding any new strategic properties. I'd like to go back and and look at the ones we have, figure it from there, and maybe come back to this later.
Any other discussions? Sure, Counselor Atkinson?
Thank you, Chair. Two questions. The the proposed the Lansdowne property, this is just the strip located to the east of Lansdowne that we're talking about, or we also including the little small mall on the opposite side. But this doesn't include like anytime fitness or the grocery store at all. It's just just that strip mall? Thank you. And no, good. I'm actually, I'm actually in 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 support of this. I'm I'm looking forward to 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 hear what the public has to say about designating these as as strategic properties. But I think what what staff should keep in mind is when we're doing the public consultations, I think we're going to need to make it clear to people that that by doing this, we're not inviting development on these sites. We're we're anticipating development on those sites, and this is an opportunity for us to sort of shape how that development fits, which is why there being these properties could be developed designated as strategic. Because any any future development proposals are going to have an impact on the town, as as the mayor indicated. If there's a proposal for residential placement at the Muse, it's going to have an impact. And and I I think designating these as strategic does give us a little more flexibility in working with the owners and shaping that vision. So so when the public meetings happen, I think we're going to need to be very keen with people to explain that this isn't an invitation to develop. This is the town preparing for an eventual development on those sites.
Excuse me, excuse me. Any other discussions on this? Counselor Conley, please.
Another question. For the properties that are currently in a low-density area, I understand that designating them as strategic properties gives them the opportunity to increase density. Can that still be accomplished on a case-by-case basis with amendments if the council at that time decide, like the CPHS, for example? Can that be done as a single application outside of a strategic property designation?
Through the chair, I I'm I'm sorry, Counselor. I'm not quite sure I understand the nature of your question.
Can we increase the densities on a site-by-site basis on an individual application outside of a strategic property? If we do not do this and somebody from for Lake Avenue comes forward with a high-density application, can we approve high-density on a case-by-case basis?
Thank you. Yeah. So right now, the official plan provides siting parameters for high-density uses up to ninety units per gross hectare. If a proposal comes forward that's in excess of ninety units per gross hectare, it goes straight to an OPA, and then council gets to evaluate that. If it was strictly a residential designated property, they would have to demonstrate that they have access to a local collector road, that they have adequate off-site parking. Trying to think what other parameters are. There there's minimum lot area parameters and minimum frontage parameters. So there is a framework for where we would consider high-density even outside strategic properties. So if, for example, you decide you're not going to include any of these five sites, but one of them does choose to come forward, there is a framework for evaluating that.
Mayor Randall?
Thank you. Counselor Conley asked exactly what I was going to ask about the if we, as part of what you mentioned, is that through this process, we could then restrict these properties from doing residential in, say, the Muse or the Cheerful Giver, force them to stay commercial. I don't think we'd have a hope and heck of ever getting that. My my other concern is, is and again, I I I've spoken to to many of the people that are attached to these properties over many years through the staff and through discussions, like this isn't we have conversations with these people all the time. And I I really don't want to set somebody up for a for a fight and and there's a there's a livability that we need to consider. And Carlton Place, again, we are had this discussion, I know other people disagree. We are overly dense. We are only going to get continue to get more dense. We just did a secondary study for the for the properties behind Walmart, which I think is is an excellent study, provides a lot of opportunities to potentially move traffic that we know is going to be an issue. But when we add another five thousand people to this town and a thousand cars or two thousand cars or however many cars that's going to be, we're not getting any bigger and livability becomes an issue. I question whether there is ever a day, and maybe there will be, and I'll be wrong, and I'll be glad to eat it if I do, where where vehicular traffic is not a thing downtown in Carlton Place. Or in Carlton Place in general. We are going to be a commuter into the city. Yes, over time, we are going to see more businesses come to Carlton Place that will benefit folks that live in a certain area, but I don't know that we're ever going to get to that beautiful fifteen-minute like Carlton Place is currently a fifteen-minute city. I don't see too many people walking to Walmart or Canadian Tire, the liquor store to get what they need. They're taking their vehicles. And if we add four stories or two stories of residential above a commercial unit in a boxed-in area where we can't fit cars, I have concerns with that. And and again, as Dana said, if a if a developer wants to come forward in a future council that we might not even be a part of decides that that's the perfect thing for that area on a case-by-case basis, I would feel much better that that way. And I I agree with Counselor or Deputy Mayor Tennant in that I think that it would be better to deal with the existing ones. That is what this interim control was brought forward in the first place for, was to deal with the current ones and the exact thing that you you had mentioned, Nikki, about those sites specific. So I agree with Deputy Mayor Tennant. And and that I think that that we should look after those and that these individual sites can come to us on an individual basis. The only other question I actually have is the high school. So the high school, we would get an opportunity to if if and when the province deems it that we're going to get a new high school, which we hope comes at some point because of our population increases. Would we, as a municipality, have preferential ability to purchase that property from ahead of other people? Is that is that not part of the hierarchy where where provincially run institutions, say, like Algonquin and Perth, it goes to other potential educational institutions, then it goes to governmental institutions, and then municipalities are next in line before it would go to the open public?
It would certainly have a protocol that they have to follow for disposing of their property.
Is is what I just stated, the protocol? That's what I guess that's what I'm asking.
I I don't know. I'd have to look into it and and get back to council on that.
Okay, thank you. So that would be a reason why I if I and I think I'm stating it because I think that is the case. If we were going to at some point purchase that because it's being deemed not needed by the by the government anymore because they're building a new high school, I don't know, I don't see the benefit of having it. And I and I think it would be a property that the town would be very interested in in the future. Again, we might not be the council that's making that decision, but I think that would be a property that we'd want to have control of. So we'd be restricting or benefiting ourselves or or another governmental agency or another school from doing stuff. And again, that property is also extremely landlocked, as we already know with the portables going out the front lawn. So that's it. Thank you. You've answered all my questions.
Is there any further discussion? Counselor Kavanaugh?
Thank you. Thanks, Nikki. Just listening to all my my colleagues here and this is this is what I love about discussing strategic properties is because by nature of just bringing this forward through throughout this process, has allowed each of us and the public in general to think about what that vision looks like, what what we might like to see, what the potential pros and cons of different development types in different areas are. So I I really enjoy looking at and and thinking about those things, but I have to agree with what Deputy Mayor Tennant had said was I think because there are so many ideas floating around about what if this, what if this, what if there, what if over there, that I think it's beneficial to address the ones we have first and and look at what those concrete examples look like and then consider whether we broaden that reach to other properties, because in the interim, my understanding is anybody could bring forth an application and we could assess it on a case-by-case basis, us as council or future councils, about whether that is appropriate. And when it comes to things like restricting development in certain locations, what what has been said multiple times here is that there are certain instances where we might put that in there, but we wouldn't be able to defend it if if it came down to it. So I think that much like Deputy Mayor Tennant has stated, I think the prudent course of action is to appreciate the conversation for what it was because it got us all thinking about what this looks like and what the potential pitfalls are and what the steps would be, looking at things like you know, transit, transportation within the community and how that reflects it and deal with those first properties and then circle back to whether we think it's appropriate to add others. Not really question, but just.
Thank you, Nikki.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm I'm hearing your split council tonight, so I'll let you figure that out, but I'm hearing a strong support from three counselors to amend the motion. And conveniently, that motion is very easily amended to remove the word new strategic properties and replace the word with existing strategic properties. And by doing so, what you will provide me And by doing so, what you will provide me direction to do is move forward with an official plan amendment and a development permit by law amendment to modify those five existing properties.
Sure, Mayor Randall?
So would we be doing that anyway through the interim control, I guess? Is that, so is this a necessary motion if we're already doing what you're suggesting through the interim control? That's just my own, I'm, I'm just confused that way.
Thank you. It would, it would be helpful to have clear direction from council in a motion that you're directing staff to bring forward a municipally-led amendment. The second reason that I'd like a motion is as it pertains to the development permit bylaw. So because we just passed the new bylaw, it's under moratorium. Unless council passes a motion directing an application to come forward.
Is there any other discussions on this? I will read the motion that is on the floor right now and we vote on that. I'll reread it again so everyone knows. The council directs staff to prepare an application for an official planning amendment and development permit bylaw amendment, respecting the inclusion of new strategic properties as identified in the report by director, by the Director of Development Services dated June twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five. All in favor? Oh, sorry. Okay, so I agree.
Can I make a motion to amend it to remove the word new and replace it with existing strategic properties? So that would be in both step one and step two of the, the bylaw. Is that the only amendment?
I would get rid of the word inclusion of, I would just say respecting the existing strategic property. So you're removing the inclusion of new and replacing it with respecting the existing strategic properties. Does that work, Counselor Conley, for you?
So I'll need that to reply, sorry, Counselor Atkinson. Okay. Moved by Counselor Conley, seconded by Counselor Atkinson. All in favor of the amended motion? Any opposed? And that amended motion is passed. Okay, thank you for that discussion.
There is a second, we, we have to do something with that second portion too, right? Because it is a second, an actual second motion. So we just would pass both. We only passed, I thought we only passed the first one. But I would refer to the clerk to tell us what we should be doing on that one.
Okay, I'll read the second suggested motion. That in accordance with section seventy-two dash two-point-one C of the Planning Act, council permit the Director of Development Services to bring forward an amendment to the new development permit bylaw as it pertains to the inclusion of additional strategic properties. And that is moved by. No. So how? All in favor of the amended motion? Any opposed? And that motion is passed. And we're moving on to financial report, communication one-three-six-zero-seven-four. Teresa, Teresa McConkey, our treasurer. I'll put the motion on the floor, Teresa, that the suggested motion is that the council receive as information the financial report Jan- January first to July thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five, as detailed in the treasurer's report dated August twelfth, twenty-twenty-five. And the floor is yours for that, Teresa. Oh, sorry, yes, I need to move her in second. Counselor Atkinson, seconded by Counselor Kavanaugh, and now the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And so I'm presenting a financial report to the end of July, twenty-twenty-five, which is fifty-eight percent of the year is complete. So I analyzed our operating results for significant variances to that, ten percent more or less than fifty-eight percent. And they're listed there. There's nothing that jumps out. Yeah, being of concern. The next part, though, is the part that council has approved budget deviations throughout the year already. And a list of those appear. And at the moment, it means we have surplus funding of six-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand. Hence why the other variances don't concern me. So I think we're going to be in a, a good place by the end of the year. Just a reminder that not all of that is tax, tax reserves. It's, there's a good chunk that would be water and sewer reserves, the industrial pumping station savings of four-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand is in particular.
Thanks, Teresa. Any discussion on this? Mayor Randall?
Thank you. In that chart, it's a very small amount, but I'm confused because I'm on the, I'm on the committee. Why did we only receive seventy-five hundred dollars from the county for climate action this year? That was a, we, we actually did do that for, but for next year. It was a budgeted item that next year we would only receive seventy-five hundred, but this year we were already in the queue to get that eleven thousand. So I, I'm, you have, you don't have a, a reason why.
No, I, we were approved for the lower amount because we were told that the amount got reduced by the county for twenty-twenty-five.
So I will, yeah, to my knowledge, and again, I chaired that committee. I'm sure that was budgeted for next year. So I, I, when I'm in Perth tomorrow night with Deputy Mayor Tenant, I'll, I'll speak to, to staff about that. Again, it's a very small amount, but I was expecting that to be for next year. And then Teresa, can you just remind me how we got the four-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand dollars in savings on the, on the one and the two-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand dollars, which are the bulk of, of those, that number?
The tender results that Guy brought to you identified those savings in both cases.
So they, they are, they're just straight up, we tendered it, it came back with the perfect, thank you.
Is there any other discussions? Diane?
So I have my application that I submitted and right on the form, it said funding request up to seventy-five hundred dollars. And that's what we applied for because that was the maximum and that's their form. So. Okay, that'd be great.
Any other discussions on this? See none, all in favor of the proposed motion? Any opposed? See none, motion's carried. And Teresa, you're still on the seat. Item E, the twenty-twenty-five tax rate revision, revision, communication one-three-six-zero-seven-five. And I will get the motion on the floor first. The council approve option one to issue revised tax notices for twenty-twenty-five as detailed in the treasurer's report dated August twelfth, twenty-twenty-five. And that bylaw twenty-three dash two-zero-two-five be amended to revise the twenty-twenty-five tax rates. And the floor is all yours, Teresa.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Move her in second.
Sorry, I need to move her in second. Move by Mayor Randall, seconded by Counselor Conley. Sorry, thank you.
Thank you. So this one's not good news, but we need to revise our bylaw for tax rates for twenty-twenty-five. Staff use a website provided by the province to balance the taxes that we're issuing to residents. However, this year, despite the fact that the county's rates were put in, in March, one of the lower-tier municipalities in, in our area was later than ever. And for some reason, this makes opt to not update the county's rates appropriately until that's done. So going forward, we have a process in place and this will not happen again, for sure. But at this point in time, we collected two-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand dollars short for the, the county. So we gave you two options. One is the town can cover that or we can issue new notices to the entire town.
Teresa, any discussions on this? Counselor Atkinson, followed by Mayor Randall.
Well, what a pain in the butt. Just a question. What, what about an option three? Which is we, we don't bother people with this, this year, but we transfer the diff, we carry the difference over to next year. And apply the difference next year with that increased rate next year rather than, yeah, rather than doing that, because it's just, I read the letter that's attached to this as well and it's, it's, I, I read it three times and I just got more confused each time I read it. So I'm just wondering if it would be worthwhile taking that approach rather than us absorbing the mistake, but just including it in next year's budget.
So not quite that cleanly. You could choose to cover the two-hundred-and-fifteen or the amount fifty-one thousand from reserves this year and then include an additional levy for the town's portion to cover it off next year. But I can't, I don't think we can change the county's rates next year.
Mayor Randall?
Thank you. I'll follow up with Counselor Atkinson saying that this is disappointing for sure. How long have you been in municipal government now, Teresa?
Eleven years.
Thank you. Have you ever seen this before in your time in, and I'll, I'll ask Diane the same thing. You've been in longer, never happened. So it's disappointing that Carlton Place, at least for the seven years I've been on council, is generally first out of the gate. We get all our stuff, all our ducks in a row. We do our due diligence and we are, we're, we're proud of the fact that, that we do things the right way. I, I know this was obviously not done on purpose, but another municipality is causing us to go back to our citizens and say, I'm sorry, but their goof-up and clerical error or mistake or whatever it was is going to cause us because we do things efficiently. Cause us to go back to our citizens and, and ask for additional funds for county taxes, not for our own local taxes, but for county taxes. I'm glad you got this thing fixed. I would counter Counselor Atkinson's option three by saying that any amount of extra tax is crappy, quite frankly, but the amount is not great. It is a large sum in its totality, but it, each individual tax payer, it isn't a large, large sum. And I would hate, it is a, overall, it's a, what about a point and a half of taxes to us? And if we start a point, like you already know how hard budgeted time is and how at the very end of the day, we're, we're clawing and scratching for, you know, a quarter point or a half a point. To add, to start negative at a point and a half when, when another municipality, I can't stress that enough, another municipality has caused us this issue. It sucks, but I think we should just clear it up this, this year and, and not start in the negative next year. That's my opinion and I'm glad to listen to whoever.
Counselor Conley?
I just want to make sure that this won't happen again. Something's been done to prevent this in the future. And are we the only municipality in the county that has to go back and do this or others in the same position?
I believe there's another one in the same position.
Deputy Mayor Tenant?
Yeah, I like Counselor Atkinson's suggestion. It's, it's, it's not a lot of money. I mean, if you've got a municipal tax bill that's three thousand dollars, what's, you know, what's fifty or sixty bucks? However, I do think it would be awfully annoying to receive that letter mid-year asking for a small check. You know, this, this explanation won't be satisfying to anybody. Like, you know, I, I know what's happened here and it's a logical explanation, but it's not going to make anybody happy. I think the idea is best if we were to pull from reserves, pay the county, collect with a letter in the next tax levy bill for next year when we do our next mailouts. And, you know, when you're paying three thousand dollars, what's three thousand sixty at that point? It's, it's, it just, it, it creates a nuisance check that somebody has to send and we've got five thousand nuisance checks to collect.
Teresa?
So just on that point, it wouldn't actually create an additional payment for anybody. Our, our November, our installments are still due and it would be added to that installment. So it's not another payment, but it's an extra amount on the November.
Mayor Randall?
So, and, and it's the exact reason why I'm saying we should do it now because it is a minis, not a minisc, again, wrong choice of words. It's a small amount, but next year when we are floating around a two and a half or a three percent or a four percent tax increase and we have to jump it to catch that two-hundred-and-fifty, which is a point and a half, all of a sudden we're doing a four and a half percent increase or a five and a half percent increase because we've got to capture that additional. It, believe me, you think it's bad this year to, to say that, that somebody, hey, John Q or Mrs. Q taxpayer, you need to pay an additional eighty-four this year on your November, which again, it's a pain, but it's explainable. Or as it, in its totality, we have to increase our tax increase next year a point and a half. I think next year we are not going to want to do that. That's just my opinion and I'll vote against that if you comment it.
Deputy Mayor Tenant?
Yeah, I didn't realize there's one going out in November. I, I'm fine with that too. As long as it just doesn't come out as a separate mailout, just add it to the next one and put a letter of explanation and I think it's fine that way.
Teresa?
So it's going to be an, an extra tax bill, but it's going to be paid for in, at the same time as the November installment, just to be clear.
Are there any further discussions or comments on this? See none, all in favor of? I will read the motion one more time.
I'm sorry, but our Facebook live feed just cut, so Amanda's going to restart our Facebook live feed. So if we could just like hang on for two seconds while it gets back up. Well, except for they're not. Well, this is just what Amanda's telling me, but it, there's a delay too sometimes, right?
Is a, is a new tax bill?
Hey, so I understand we had a Facebook problem on the feed that is now back. So I will go back and read the suggested motion of the twenty-twenty-five tax rate revision, communication one-three-six-zero-seven-five. The suggested motion is that council approve option one to issue revised tax notices for twenty-twenty-five as detailed in the treasurer's report dated August twelfth, twenty-twenty-five. And that bylaw two-three-two-zero-two-five be amended to revise the twenty-twenty-five tax return. dated August twelfth, two thousand and twenty-five, and that bylaw two three two zero two five be amended to revise the two thousand and twenty-five tax return. All in favor? Opposed? And that motion has passed. Thank you. And one more for you, Teresa? Oh, it's a long one. Appointment of municipal auditor, communication one three six zero seven six. Um, I will read the suggested motion to put it on the floor. The council pass a bylaw to authorize the appointment of Welsh LLP as auditor of the corporation of the town of Carlton Place and its local boards, including the accounts and transactions of local non-consolidated boards, including the public library board and the board of management, business improvement area for a period of five years from two thousand and twenty-five to two thousand and twenty-nine. And the council authorized the treasurer to sign the audit engagement letters with Welsh LLP on behalf of the town of Carlton Place and its local boards for the five-year term. Can I get a mover and seconder for those? Moved by Counselor Kavanaugh, seconded by Counselor Sakapina, Sakaspinah, sorry, and the floor is yours. Thanks, Teresa.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, we went out with uh, for our with an RFP in two thousand and twenty and selected Howard Allen um, for the the five years following that. Uh, however, Howard Allen sold to KPMG, so we've had KPMG for the last three years of that particular contract. Um, so it's it's just time to do it again. We like to do this once every five years to make sure we're getting the best bang for our buck. And um, and so uh, staff uh, evaluated the two proposals that we got based on the criteria that was published in the RFP. And um, Welsh LLP uh, was the clear winner of that evaluation.
Thanks, Teresa. Any discussions on this? See none? Oh, Mayor Randall?
Not a, I I I think that we say we had a very long history with Howard Allen and KPMG through him, and I think that it would be, they've been very professional, excellent group to work with. I've had to deal with them the past three years as mayor, uh, getting asked questions and such. Um, but just thank you and that uh, and that, you know, it's been wonderful working with you over these years and and uh, just time to move on and go from there. So thank you very much, KPMG and Howard Allen, for all your service.
Thank you, Mayor Randall. Counselor Conley?
A quick question. Those prices for the upcoming five years, are those kind of set? If KPMG buys them up, will those prices change, or are those the the prices for the next five years?
Good question. Um, so when KPMG bought out Ho- Howard Allen, they kept the prices that Howard had um, head quoted us. Uh, they did throw in some extra charges here and there for new standards, but uh, in the main, they kept uh, the price as per the contract that they bought.
Any other discussion? See none? All in favor of this suggested motion? Opposed? And that motion is carried. And next up, we have an amendment to the Ottawa Valley recreational trail lease agreement rest stop, communication one three six zero seven seven. And Diane Smithson, our C A O, will give us a report on that. I will get the motion on the floor first, Diane. The suggested motion is that council pass a bylaw to authorize entering into an amendment to the two thousand and twenty-one Ottawa Valley recreational trail lease agreement with the county of Lanark to recognize the addition of the rest and parking areas being created by the town between Lake Avenue and Moore Street. And that is moved by Counselor Conley and seconded by Counselor Sakaspinah. Floor is yours, Diane.
So the town, uh, when it created Carlton Junction, um, entered into a lease agreement with the county for the items that we put on the the siding of the um, former CP rail. Um, it was just to recognize uh, that it's our responsibility to upkeep it, that sort of thing, but there was no charge associated with the lease. Um, and so, as you know, council has already approved, and prior to approval, staff did reach out to the county to make sure that they didn't have any issues with our proposed ATV parking and rest areas that we were creating between Lake Avenue and Moore Street. Um, and so just to recognize uh, again, those uh, additional provisions. Um, the county would like us to amend the current lease agreement to recognize those additional uh, areas rather than starting with a brand-new lease. Um, this is also going to be coming forward to the County of Lanark table. You'll be seeing it as well. I've been working with the manager of the Public Works area uh, to bring that forward. Um, I also want to point out that the lease does recognize the existing agreement that they have with the Bowmeister for uh, their encroachment uh, that they currently have, and that's been recognized by the county and will be identified in this to show that we're not responsible for that area. So anyway, I'll just uh, leave it at that, and if there's any questions, happy to answer any.
Thanks, Diane. And any discussions? Counselor Sakaspinah?
I just have a comment that um, had a notice motion about four years ago for parking, et cetera, for the ATVs down in that area, and I'm so happy to see this upgraded to the proper mark parking for them, and Heritage Committee is also involved in this rest stop and investing money, and very proud of them for keeping up the historical knowledge of the trail. Thank you. Thank you, Diane.
Any other discussions or comments on the motion? See none? All in favor of the suggested motion? Any opposed? See none, and the motion has been carried. Thanks, Teresa. Sir, Diane. Up next, we have the Ukrainian festival designation of municipal significance, communication one three six zero seven eight. Joanne Henderson, manager of recreation. Uh, I will put the motion on the floor first, Joanne. That the Ukrainian festival festival be permitted to use a portion of Riverside Park for an outdoor liquor event as detailed in the manager of recreation and cultures report dated August twelfth, two thousand and twenty-five, and that council declare the Ukrainian festival as an event of municipal significance, and that the delegation of authority by law nine four dash twenty twenty and the municipal alcohol policy be amended to authorize the manager of recreation and culture to declare events as municipal significant for the purpose of liquor licensing, and that the manager of recreation and culture notify council of such declarations at least thirty days in advance of the event. Can I get that moved by Deputy Mayor Tennant, seconded by Counselor Sakaspinah, and the floor is yours. Thanks, Joanne.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, yeah, as my report indicates, we had um, a delegation from the Ukrainian festival come forward requesting to host a small liquor event in the park during the festival on September the thirteenth. Um, they're just hoping to sell um, local breweries, um, the beer and and seltzers and such. Um, and they only estimate that they would have fifty people. I don't know what's. They estimate fifty people would be in the licensed area. Um, so as any event uh, that comes forward, I do a risk assessment. Um, they have to provide details of how they're going to control the event. They have to ensure they have uh, insurance, um, et cetera, so they have satisfied all those uh, requirements. And we need permission as as from our municipal alcohol policy council approval, as well as the AGCO requires um, council to to declare it a significant event before they can issue them the license.
Thanks, Joanne. Any discussions or comments on this? Deputy Mayor Tennant, followed by Counselor Sakaspinah.
Thanks, Joanne. Uh, that's great that they're going to put on an event. That's fantastic. Um, sure, we'll have lots of attendees. The question I had is more procedural. The um, notifying council, and and you've got at least a day now for thirty days. Um, does it have to go to council as well, or can it be done in committee of the whole? Because we so the it requires, the the bylaw requires a thirty-day notice, but we don't have to pass a notice, a motion through council for that thirty days notice to apply. This this is enough notice going through Cal? Yes, okay.
Counselor Sakaspinah?
Well, this will be year three, and if you've gone to the other two past years, the Ukrainian fest brings in hundreds of folks from out of town. I haven't seen a beer tent in Riverside Park for years, but we had Beer Fest and that went down well, and I just hope this does the same. Thank you.
Counselor Conley?
Yeah, I I'm excited to see this as part of the Ukrainian festival. I think it'll be a good thing. Um, my question was about the the kind of procedure for getting uh, an event to this to this status. Does event organizers have a checklist or a things they have to meet before this can be approved? And is that on our website? Like, how do we, how do people organizing events know what is required in order to meet the the standards for this?
Through the chair. Um, we don't actually have it on the website, but that's something that we can add to the website. We have we have a risk assessment form that we fill out. We require the organizers to meet with me, and we have a meeting and and we go through what is required. And then they they come back and say, this is what I've organized and this is what I'm presenting.
Um, in addition to the the approvals that are issued through the delegation, would council be able to know what was also not approved through the delegation? Like, what was requested and turned down?
Yes, absolutely. That's something similar to the road closure, um, applications, et cetera.
And have the discussion, Mayor Randall?
Yeah, just quickly, I agree with both those points that Counselor Conley uh, just brought up. That's uh, you know, the more we can get touchless, essentially, where people can go and find and know that information, get it all looked after and just hand in their application, and it's smooth and and quick. It'll just make, I think it'll open up for more of these types of things where uh, where events can have, you know, alcohol, or uh, even if it's non-alcohol events, people uh, that are that are wanting to come to Carlton Place and and run events, if there are things that they can just see without having to contact staff, and and it just makes it a little bit uh, smoother for sure. And I was going, so would we have to amend the existing motion to say such declarations and denials at least thirty days in advance of the event? Sorry, go ahead.
What we, we could amend the motion to say that the manager of recreation and culture notify council of all requests for such declarations.
Whatever makes it smooth there, but I just want to make sure we had to amend it first. So I would, I don't, we had a mover and seconder. So we'd have to ask them if they're cool with that amendment.
Are the movers and secuers good with Mayor Randall's changes? They are. So we have a mover and seconder on the amended motion, which is to change that the manager of recreational culture notify council of all requests at least thirty days in advance of the advance of the event. A mover and seconder, Mayor Randall, and oh, sorry, stays the same. Sorry, stays the same. Sorry. All all in favor of the changed motion, amended motion? Opposed? And that motion is passed. Thank you. And we are on to new and other business, which this evening we have none. Uh, seven information listings, we have five this evening, which are all available on this town website for anyone who wants to review those. The suggested motion is that the information listings dated August twelfth twenty five, August twelfth, two thousand and twenty-five be received. Moved by Deputy Mayor Tennant, seconded by Counselor Atkinson. Any discussion? See none? All in favor? Opposed? And that motion has carried. And we are going to be going into closed session. Uh, four items, update on a litigation matter. Two, acquisition or deposition of land. Three, acquisition or dis- disposition of land. Four is an identifiable individual application to urban forest river corridor committee. That the committee move into closed session at seven twenty-three P M to discuss matters subject to the municipal act, section two thirty-nine, section two. B, personal matters about any individ- any identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees, is item four. C, proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board, items two and three. E, litigation or potential litigation, including matters before administrative tribunals affecting the municipality or local board, item one. And that the following persons be permitted to participate in the meeting. Diane Smithson, C A O. Stacy Blair, clerk, moved by. Counselor Conley, seconded by Counselor Sakaspinah. Any discussions? See none? All in favor? Any opposed? And that motion is carried. We will be going into closed session, and we'll see you on the other side.
Okay, we are back. Rise and report Dan Smith will provide us with the rise and report.
So for items one, two, and three, staff direction was sorry, one item one was for an information item only. Items two and three was staff direction was provided in closed session. And for item four, we have the following motion that Dean Smith be appointed to the urban forest river corridor committee. So you need a mover and second secondary of that Mr. Chairman.
Over and secondary for that, Councilor Calmly, Councilor Kavanaugh, all in favor. Opposed and that motion is carried. Oh, I didn't have my mic on there. Sorry. Adjournment. The suggested motion is that the meeting be adjourned at eight oh two. Could I have a mover and secondary please? Mayor Randall, a deputy mayor tenant, all in favor. Any opposed? And that motion has passed. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.